Governor, I'll call this finance committee meeting to order. I want to ask Councilwoman Jackson if you would be so kind to give us the elevation.
Yes, if you're ready, yes. Dear everybody, we just thank you for this day, thank you for this hour, and thank you for this opportunity to be of service in your world, in your field, in your labor, a laborer for you, Lord God. We just thank you right now that you have given us all that we need for understanding, for wisdom, Lord God. We just ask your Holy Spirit to reign, rule, and abide in each and every one of us, Lord God. Let us have a debate, a discussion, Lord God, but let us remember who we are inside of you, Lord God, and just remember what is in the best interest of our city. Lord God, we just thank you, and we will always be careful to give your name glory. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Okay, first, I'm on the agenda's RDS contract, but I'm going to ask Chief, because I know he did it for me, he had something there to pay me that he needed to get to, so I'm going to bring him.
Mr. President, this is the same issue that I've spoken to you guys about before, briefly, of public safety meeting. I am asking to, again, I ask for any revenue increase to shift forty thousand of maintenance funding over to allow us to begin to lease six new patrol cars. And then with Councilwoman Benjamin's motion the other night, that frees up also the ability to surplus some vehicles, and we'll be able to hopefully put that in the same line item. If we go over our maintenance, then that will be a cushion, I believe.
So how many surplus needs have I been looking at, Chief?
I've already counted fourteen, and I haven't gotten that to Water Street yet. I think we're going to have at least thirty thousand dollars worth of surplus.
Chief, I heard a story about a citizen pulling over an officer to a little gamble about the view of that was perhaps not even the best for the city. And the officer had to try and look back.
That's correct. But, I mean, the officer was smart enough to realize he needed to get it off the road. He went ahead and brought it to headquarters. The citizens followed him to headquarters and come in and spoke to me.
You know, questions, Chief?
Chief, can you speak about courtesy about you people? I mean, just, just, yeah, on the table.
Yes, sir.
I think he's already spoke about that.
In a couple meetings, Ms. Plushore, I know you've been ill, and glad to see you back, in a couple meetings, I'll tell you, it's so bad, the last meeting, as we were talking, Officer Gaskins was taking the starter off of an old vehicle to put on a vehicle to have one to use that night. So we've got patrol officers doing their own mechanic work, so they'll have a vehicle to drive. It's dire. I policed at three different agencies, and this is the worst fleet system I've ever seen. And I think what's better is this could create a continuous fleet program with a surplus and diverting some of the maintenance money.
Of course, I'm just catching up on this.
Yes, sir.
I don't have the budget in front of me. That line item maintenance is how much?
Seventy-five.
How much do we spend to date?
I don't know. I mean, we're nowhere near that. I will tell you, it is the number-one expenditure right now, reliable, reliable more checks than anyone right now.
I know that, looking at the purchase order, that we've seen, we've seen, I see vehicle maintenance several times, hundred and twenty-six dollars, five hundred, and eight dollars vehicle repair out of the police department, a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So I'm looking at that now.
Also, keep in mind, I don't mean to interrupt you, sometimes, if it's under certain, if it's certain vehicles, I can pay for it out of asset forfeiture, and I've done that before as well. So that way, we don't take from the City General, from the City Police budget. Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you something, Chief. I was made aware that there were vehicles in another city that were available.
Yes, ma'am.
Vehicles ranging from 2010 to 2014, police cruisers. I want to say they were four, no, they were.
God, if we're talking about the same place, Jackson?
Jackson. And we have some of the vehicles charged.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? And I also talked to another place about some Taurus, and that's why I'm getting confused. But I got, I got an opportunity to call Jackson, because I actually spoke with some citizens that were willing to purchase their last five vehicles, but they had already sold them. They were selling them.
I think they sold them to Camden, Big D.
They sold them seven, but they had five remaining. And I spoke to Camden as well, but they had a total of sixty-five thousand dollars on 2010 to 2014, and they were for twenty-five hundred dollars. And I had spoke to great citizens like the ones that are here today, and probably some of the ones that are here today, and just told them about the need and my decision or my inability to understand or see how we could pay for this over five years. And they were willing, they said, "I write you a check today, let me know where it needs to be." And so I had a total of four citizens, right, willing to write five checks, and I called Jackson, maybe like we sold them two days ago. And I said, "If we had only known, that could have taken us to the budget time." Because what I'm going to try and do, and I know you all think that I'm just extremely hard, but what I'm trying to do is make sure that they have what they need in the interim until we can get where we, where we need to be. And I spoke with Wheelcocks, and they said they bought seven vehicles for thirty-five hundred dollars. And they said the worst that they had to do on the vehicles they did in their own lot. And that they were, I said, "Are they running well, or they take you where you need to be?" And they said, "Yes, ma'am."
Just, just keep in mind, Ms. Jackson, is those agencies normally go to their neighboring agencies first. I was never notified. I promise you, if I was aware, I became aware right after Camden purchased those, and then when we called, got the same information that you got. But I've also reached out as far as Decaf County Sheriff's Office, I got wind. I periodically will get an email from the Chiefs Association, or the DA's Association, or the Sheriff's Association. Now, the Housing Authority, Mr. Canaro Randolph just bought us a vehicle that I purchased from, that we're in the process. I say, "Ah, the Housing Authority, they will use it for police in the Housing Authority from the Seventeenth Judicial Drug Task Force." So we engage in that same thing, it was just a situation, I didn't know.
Didn't know about it.
No, I was not on their email. And generally, the way it works, you check with your partner local agencies, local agencies, and if they don't buy, then you send out like a statewide email.
Right. And I actually asked, I've sent Hoover, I talked to them, Coast Police, kind of, I didn't get a call.
I talked, I talked to Coast Police.
Yeah, the partners talked to them, but I left a message. But I did speak with Hoover today, they emailed, we emailed each other back and forth, Mr. Moore, Justin Moore, and he made me aware that they were looking at doing so next year this time, but they didn't have him currently, and that he would, he's their fleet manager, and we'll need a fleet manager.
And the key word there is fleet, or I think we both agree.
Right, right, right. Well, you know, I'm, I'm all there, believing that we need a fleet program. I'm just not sold on how we're going to pay the forty-one thousand dollars over the five years, and I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I don't want to rehash what I've already spoken, because I understand exactly where you are. I would just like to make sure that when we're making these decisions, that they're not impromptu, and that they, that we're thinking long-term about how it's going to impact. Because it's going to be, it's going, if this, if you say, "All I need is forty thousand dollars right now."
One time.
One time. I would say, "Well, I have this much of my discretion there, can you give that much, and we would make it happen, but I don't think that we should make something happen today that's going to impact us for five years." And that's just, that's my only concern, and that's why I was asking the council to look at it in the budget, because I remember Ms. Wade, I think she was sitting right here, last year, when we got asked about some things that we would, went ahead and purchased, and she advised us against it, and we don't have a treasurer right now. So we're going to have to remember what she's taught us and what she's told us. And so that's where I am, but I have gotten another agency that I was informed, a business that I was informed that may give to sell, and so I'm in talks with them now to see what we can do, because if we can have someone to give us forty dollars or commit to forty dollars, forty thousand dollars.
I mean, interrupt you, there is a possible long-term solution, as is the 1033 program. It was suspended up until the new administration. It has been reopened, and they are now even surplus, 1033 is the Defense Logistics Organization or Agency, DLA, so it's surplus military, everything from guns to vehicles. So, and they, they, for the first time, is, it's possible in the future that we can get on the list for 1033 MP vehicles. But that's going to, that's a long-term solution, that's down the road, but we're, at least we're engaging on that. Secondly, there is a prominent dealer in Georgia, I think it's Brandon Ford, and they specialize in refurbishing law enforcement vehicles and resettling them. I intend to go, hopefully this week or next week, and take a look. They're nowhere near as good a price as what Jackson was doing, but they're, they're much better than, than, than the prices here. But it's also, and again, I'm still, Mr. President, I'm waiting, to be fair, I'm waiting on a quote from a local Chevy dealer as well. While I can tell you, these quotes are well below state value, I mean, state bids, and I don't know if that's a result of this, of Skyler Ford being aware that local dealers can, can sell up there within five percent of state bid, so Skyler came back, some of these are six thousand below state bid. So, I mean, it's, I'm waiting to see what Chevy proposes, but that, these prices are incredible. The Tauruses are twenty-four thousand dollars a piece, the state bids almost thirty thousand dollars almost.
But in between time, we don't do something, I could, I could, I can envision our police officers having to put lights on their shoulders to respond to incidents, because they don't have no vehicle to go to. Chief, I'm just catching up on this, this three thousand dollars, is that a month for these six vehicles?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And with the interest, I mean, we're looking at about forty-one thousand a year.
Forty-one thousand, forty dollars.
Now, we have options to go in quarterly payments, and the interest would be better. I just thought this would be the cheapest and the best way for the city, but that's the quote I got was, was over this timeframe. And again, I don't know what Chevy's going to come back at, but Chevy only produces the Tahoe right now as a police vehicle, and I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to be close.
And let me, and I heard Councilman Schur, since he wasn't here, I heard him say, "Put in the lights on the shoulder, we don't want them to put the lights on the shoulder," but also, "We don't want the lights out at the city." And if we continue the way that we're doing, getting short-staffed and getting the money right now, and not thinking how it's going to impact us in five years, we're going to do that. I showed you here today, the six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is proposed through state legislature to be taken away. That's revenue that we received last year that potentially we could not receive this year. I made the council aware that we're enrolling a bond with an increasing two-hundred-thousand-dollar payment next July, that's July 2020, that's going to be two-hundred thousand plus forty thousand if we agree to do this, and in three years from there, it's two-point-two million. And so that's what I'm looking at, and that's two-point-two million plus the forty thousand. We're just continuing to add on to the long-term debt. If we had a plan, if we had a reason, if we, if we could say a hundred and seventy...
This is the first fleet plan we've ever been involved.
Right, but if you allow me to...
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
If we had the funding to say, "We can pay this one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars today," and then when we don't have long-term debt, sometimes, we have to just bite the bullet and say, "Can we afford this right now?" I would rather do that if we had the funding than to incur...
Zero interest.
Right, and to incur an additional fee for five years, when we got all this pending debt, we're, we're up to debt, sorry, years, and I don't think that we're looking at the long-term debt we're in, when we're trying to supply all the needs, and that's what I'm saying.
And I understand, and I appreciate your passion and your argument. One thing that can be considered, it does not stop the continuous debt, but in speaking with the commander of the Seventeenth Judicial Task Force today, he explained, "They buy a new, get a year or two out of them, turn around and can almost sell them at the same price and buy new ones." You are in a continuous pattern that way, but you're paying no maintenance. So you're talking about the forty thousand diversion. If we don't buy some new vehicles, that maintenance, remember, we budget at seventy-five, but we spent one-hundred-and-eleven, that's going to continue, that's not going anywhere. So I understand that, you know, you're, you're being fiscally responsible, you know, it's my job to be concerned about the police department. I think public safety is the priority and the number-one function of government, and we're at a point, we will not make it to October. I will not have enough cars to have officers on patrol.
And your budgets are just projections on paper, that's when you've got the money. This is what, this is just so hard for some people to understand. Simply, you've got a seventeen-million-dollar budget, that's when you've got that money. And if you look at the history of the city, they had decreasing revenues for the last four years. We got to find new revenues, and we're going to continue to keep out here and go forward, and that's a fact.
Well, maybe they can discuss additional revenues at another time, but you made my point for me. Because it's on paper that we have seventy-five thousand dollars budget, that doesn't mean that we actually have seventy-five thousand dollars.
But still, that don't mean, that don't mean you stop your operations in the city.
We don't want to stop our operations.
Because you have your projected of your budget, once you get to a certain point that you just reconfigure it, because you realize you don't have the money to go forward, so motherfucking has to be cut loose. Still, you got your police department has to be operational.
And I agree with that. And so that's why I look at other options. That's why I've called Jackson, that's why I called Wheelcocks, to say, "How did they get that, to be of the neighborhood, to get us to the point that we're, we can hold off into October, when we can look at the full budget, the full depth of what we have, and not make an impassioned decision, because we have officers that need these vehicles tremendously? And we all have a part, a part to play in that." And the chief has said one thing, "I have, it is my responsibility to make sure that the department has what they need, it is our responsibility to make sure that the city runs." So we got to look at his department and every other department within the city to make sure that they're operating at top-notch as well. And so what I'm saying is, let's explore, just like I took the time, hold on, just like I took the time to explore those options, be it they fail. He said, "They actually sold the vehicle on vehicles last Tuesday." So if I knew Monday night, when we were having this impassioned discussion, we would, you would have had those vehicles, because like I said...
A former Camden officer called me.
Right, and I got a call, and within an hour and a half, I had everybody trying to bring me checks, and I'm like, "I, I, let me call them," and they weren't there. What I'm saying is, you have a community that's behind you.
Oh, I know that.
You have a community that wants to support, but you also have a community that wants us to be fiscally responsible. And so if we can search out some of those things, if we can give it a week, we may find something else. You say you called Coast Police, I know that we have something that's coming down. You say you spoke to someone in the desk, that we got different information, and so I won't go back into that, but I have contacted the agency, they said, just like you stated, maybe we can put businesses' names on vehicles, they're saying, "Hey, we've done that before with other cities, let me see if this is something that's viable to sell."
That's a good point. I am in the process with some citizens of starting a 501(c)(3) for public safety, but I also think, we ultimately, in Selma, have a responsibility to provide public safety to the citizens of Selma. Now, as a department head, I get a budget, and if, by diverting this, all I'm asking is divert this forty thousand. If the money's not there, we're going to make sure these, these car notes are paid. I may have to take it from somewhere else, we may have to wear the same uniforms another year or two, but we're going to pay the bills. We do that all the time, I have to do that. That's part of being, being an agency head. I mean, I've done it at the state level, I do it at this level. I came before you guys two years ago and said, "I've got to have some rifles," and y'all trusted, y'all trusted me to have the authority, and we continue to pay the bills. I understand your heart.
At what point we stop exploring to make a decision? Because we can, we can, we can, we can explore forever, but when are we going to make a decision about the city, about getting these officers, the equipment they need so badly to need?
The last three weekends, Councilwoman, I have gotten a call from the patrol commander saying, "I don't have enough cars for officers." So as opposed to leaving an officer working the desk, I said, "Go ahead and double up." All right, so that makes, I don't, I don't want to talk about numbers, but that generally is going to drop us significantly. We need to have an officer in every, you know, y'all have eight wards, we have eight beats, they don't match, somebody, I don't know why they should, but they don't.
Right, I understand.
That prevents me from having an officer in every beat. That's a, that's a, that's a patrol problem, and when Ms. Janey talked about not seeing as many cars, that's why, because at times, we're having to double up.
You missed it in two weeks' time last, so let's say, two weeks from, two weeks from today, a decision will be made, while we are looking, what we're going to go with these vehicles.
Chief, you did say the projection for the surplus would amount to about thirty thousand?
I'm guessing, but within that, yes, sir, with the amount of vehicles, I mean, I think they're at least worth fifteen hundred a piece, two thousand a piece, and I don't know if it's on Water Street yet, I got to get down there and look as, as well. It's a lot, I don't think vehicles have been surplus in a long time.
Can you get us a list, though?
Oh, yeah, I'm working on that, and I should, I'll have that all the way down to VIN number for you guys for the next meeting.
And as I previously stated, I believe we can afford it this year, only because if I was to divert it, forty-five thousand dollars, it's on paper, it's not in the bank, but if we did divert forty-five thousand dollars out of our budget, and it hasn't been spent.
Unappropriated funds.
Unappropriately, no, actually, we budgeted it to the police department for those items that Kuga Or actually purchased, so that it hasn't been spent.
Well, in fairness, the other night was the first I've, I've heard, I heard about that.
Right, in fairness, you weren't allowed to come to any of the budget hearings, so you didn't hear what we did.
And I don't want to take away from what Rex and those guys did.
Right, they did an awesome job, they did an awesome job, but, so we have money this year on paper, so I want to keep clarifying that, and so we can find that forty thousand, it would be great, but I'm looking at the five, four years back.
Well, another option, perhaps, is if we're at a point where we've got to think about, are we going to re-enter into a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-year contract, contract with the county, which is, there's triple payment going on there, a state arresting, be arrested for a felony, the state allocates so much per day, and the federal government allocates per day. I think we're the only city in the state that's also allocating money for that.
And I, I think that's a great point, I actually put it in my post to my citizens this weekend, that we need to explore that, because of the contract, potential contract...
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty.
I thought about twenty nineteen, we were told about twenty nineteen, and I think, and I think what we need to do, Mr. President, hopefully, we should ask the county to, rather than tie us into a multi-year contract, ask if they will work with us on the month-to-month grant.
I talked, I talked what you were talking about, because I think, I'm understanding, we're currently paying about, what, two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
And I think it's going up to about four hundred, four hundred thousand.
Yeah, because we have to pay, right, and then we have to pay extra jail days, we have to pay extra food, extra jail, if we get fourteen beds, and if we have more than fourteen people in jail, we got to pay more.
Right.
And they closed on us before, I'm not knocking shit in the past, we run big details, we made a lot of arrests that night, and they said, "You still have your capacity," so I had to call Lounes County and say, "Will you take our prisoners?"
Well, the county building grant that we had explored would have been the best thing for us, and of course, I guess, in my memory is fairly right, we were denied that because of our credit rating.
No, we was denied because when you came out and said we didn't have any money.
That's what happened.
That's why we was denied.
Well, it would have been the best thing for us to, for two hundred thousand dollars, we could have constructed our own companies.
Well, I actually have the opportunity to speak with them.
To the fact that that grant was denied, and since we're only even over renewal of a multi-year grant, a multi-year contract, I think it would be wise if we ask the county if they will work with us on the month-to-month grant.
Mr. President, I would just humbly ask for an opportunity to get an up or down vote on this. I wouldn't, I don't come before you guys and ask for a lot, I come once and ask for rifles. I, you know, I make it work in our budget. It's bad, I wouldn't be here, I don't come disagree with you guys often, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't bad.
I understand, and Chief, and he's not personal.
Oh, I know, yeah, I think we both understand.
Yes, we understand it. To your point, Councilman Schur, I spoke with the, our probation former attorney, and he stated that, he actually made mention that there was, it would cost about five-hundred-thousand dollars to restore the general in our current facility, and that's, that could have been two years of that contract, and we could have made work until we, until we were able to do something else. So maybe we need to look at what we can do in the meantime, to get that done, since we've been denied.
Well, to realize, I respect the request that the county obliges to let go of month-to-month contract, because you never know what tomorrow's going to bring, and we always need people to research to find out where the resources are, and to tie us into a five-year or four-year or multi-year, and then we get some resources, we can do our own thing, I mean, our hands are tied. So let's respectfully ask the county if they will just help us out and go into a month-to-month contract.
I would leave the program there, it's not, it's been so tight, I'm worried about it.
Let me ask you, what beds do that contract cover, because I've heard different stories from different...
Fourteen.
Right, I understand fourteen beds, but are they felony beds, or are they misdemeanor beds?
It's, it's all, any of our arrests.
So any arrest, so if you make a felony arrest, aren't they going to county court anyway, so why would we...
They're, they're technically a state arrest, if it's, if it's under felony, and I have called the Sheriff's Association, I've called multiple sheriffs, and you take like Moberly County, they take the privileges for free. Now, I know, I'm from, I can't ask that of Dallas County, but I do think we need to reexamine, especially when we're paying extra jail days, two hundred, two hundred thousand in, two hundred thousand in twenty years.
Maybe they can take it for free, Chief.
I mean, we could have a state-of-the-art building.
And also, too, keep in mind, we have thirty thousand dollars that we also have to pay with the juvenile facility.
And I think the EMA figure this year as well, right?
So let me, let me ask, so we could consider all that when we're making decisions, but about the fee, so it's, you arrest them, but it's technically, so a shooting happens on Church Street, you arrest them, and because it's felony, they're going to district court first and then circuit court, but while they're being held on bond, or they're no bond, then we're required to pay for them, because they have a city act?
That's, well, it's because the city, it's a city, it's a city arrest, it's counted against our, our contract. Then, then when we go over, we pay what's called extra jail days.
It's a grab of evidence, it's a city.
And then, and then we get extra, and then we get extra jail food bills as well. And again, a lot of that happened in the past. I can tell you, my dialogue with Sheriff Grant, I've been very positive about trying to find some resolution to some of these things.
Well, so if we're looking at that, now, I wanted to do something, I put it in my post together, look at how we're going to do that, but that could, I was thinking that that two-hundred thousand dollars would hit on a six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollar bond payment that's going from four-fifty-four to six-fifty-four. Actually, it's going to be, the difference in the bond payment we're paying this year and next year is actually two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, I say, how, how huge is that?
The exact expiration date of that contract, I think it's twenty-nine.
I think you're right, it's twenty-nine.
I think, yeah.
I think it's twenty-nineteen.
Mitch, we've waited, I've known, Ms. Jackson, I commit to you, and I understand you got to do what you got to do, I'm not, I mean, I'm going to pull money from somewhere else, if it's, if it's pulling, where I'm not a member of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, or National Chiefs of Police, I've done that last year, I'm going to make sure our bills are paid, I'm going to, that's my job as an agency head, you set a certain amount, I got to make it work.
All right, but I think we do owe the chief a vote up or down, and our next council needs to...
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Clark?
My big excuse, thank you, sir, thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you know, some time ago, you had committed to come to the council once a month, to give us an update about what's going on in your department, for whatever the reasons, you know, I'm not criticizing, that hasn't always been. I think, Chief, it would be very helpful to me, and I'm sure it would be helpful to my colleagues, if you could get back to doing that, so that we could be aware of the successes and the problems that you guys are having over the department.
Ms. Plushore, I have no issues with that, if I can, last week, I think I've been here three times.
Yeah.
Probably to the point where they're saying, "Chief, don't come back," but I absolutely would love to do that.
The other thing, Chief, you know, we got this new ordinance.
We met our first charge on it the other night, by the way.
That's good, and I'm glad, I'm glad to see that. The other thing is, I'm not asking you guys to just target these vehicles with these dealer's tags, but I'm seeing cars, I haven't been three years with the same tag, and I think, Chief, some roadblockers have established, I think it's going to serve multi-purposes, they're going to catch people with drugs, they're going to catch people with guns, they're going to catch people with no way shots, and these are the things that bring about quality of life in our city, so, you know, I just would like to encourage your department to be able to do that sometime.
If you notice during the jubilee, we got all four motors running. We had invested money in them. Uh, and I'm going to require those to be utilized more than for parades and they'll be utilized during any clicker or ticker or any traffic enforcement blitz. And we will move as we get to clicker, ticket period, generally holiday periods, to doing just that.
Thank you.
Also, Chief, talk about the JAG, the JAG grant, how do you come along with that?
Um, I, I, I don't know price-wise where we are for, for next fiscal year, but I, I intend to get in. I, I called Senator Shelby's office last year. I intend to get engaged again this year. You know, I, I don't write. It's actually written by planning. But I can lobby for it and I, and I intend to do that. Uh, I know his chief's staff. I know some of his members well. And they agreed to help last time and, and we got a pretty good amount. So I intend to lobby, lobby them as far as I can on that.
But I teach the guy fall to the JAG grant. He got to, he got to show sustainability. You know, if you, if you get this money and then four years later, you don't have the money to keep these same offices long, then that defeats the purpose.
That's the cops grant. I mean, we have a JAG grant. We just spend for overtime.
Overtime and special details.
Right.
So you don't have to sustain it?
Not on that one, no. And that's been, that's been a lifesaver.
Councilwoman Thomas, did she?
Yes, I, I wanted to say to you too, um, I'm with, uh, these vehicles because, um, right now, the communities are dying there for the truck. Because, uh, you know, uh, in my community, you know, we had an incident last night. And this is what I, I stress on.
Yes, ma'am.
More patrol. We need more patrol in our, in each, each of our waters.
I agree.
Because some of this would help the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Thank you for putting me at the top of the agenda. I appreciate it.
Uh, next, we have an RDS contract. Uh, this contract would end, uh, the end of this month, which is March.
President, if I could, you know, I thought about this. If I, if I have, if I have to vote, I'm going to vote that we stay with RDS. Main reason we have accessibility to monies, quick, fast, and in a hurry. Although the state has the ability to go in and make arrests because of the delinquent taxpayers, RDS doesn't. I do think that we would be wise, uh, to renew the RDS contract because of the accessibility to monies and the cost. We, we'll strive for cash and we need money as quickly as we can. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Councilwoman Thomas?
Uh, remember the last time we had to meet with the, the young lady that came in with RDS?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we didn't, uh, we was asking how much money that she had taken in for fees.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Did you get, uh, uh, the total amount at that time yet?
Delinquent?
Uh-huh. You know, we was talking about, we had several businesses that were, were buried, delinquent behind. And did you get a report that, where, where did she stand with this yet?
I think the last time, the last report that I received, I think they have cooked roughly about two-hundred and fifty thousand, something like that.
Well, I'm saying, how often does she give you, uh, how often does we get a report stating, supposedly, so we should see?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that improved where she's, uh, taken in to a lot of, of the back taxes, delinquents?
Yes, ma'am. Also, too, uh, keep in mind that the contract is composed of five parts. Where you have the larceny tax, the rental tax, also the tobacco tax, business tax, um, and also the admin costs. So if we're going to move forward with it, it's five parts of the contract. Uh, also, following up on what Mr. LaShur just mentioned, far as with RDS, um, during November and December. During that time, you know, the state basically shut down, but RDS continued to remit the taxes like after Thanksgiving and also after Christmas.
I just want to say this too. I, I don't, this, I don't agree with, uh, with us keeping RDS, but I would like for RDS to do, uh, a little bit more of it than since the, the two years we've been sitting up there getting a report on delinquents, letting the taxes get that far behind. I think she should, it was coming for us.
But that's our fault. That's our fault.
Okay, well.
Because that's why, you know, at the next council meeting, I'm going to bring forth an ordinance. Where we bring the business before the council.
Yes.
And we just immediately go ahead and suspend their license.
Yes.
Uh, because if they're not up to date with the license, um, that being, if they're not up to date with the license, chances are, they're not remitting taxes either.
Because that money, that money that we, uh, been liking, it could, it could be helping a lot with this city.
Yes.
I concur with you, Mr. President. It is our fault for us to allow businesses to continue to operate at extreme delinquency that they have posted their taxes. I think RDS, of course, I was very critical of RDS because of the delinquency that businesses were doing. But then, as I began to look into the operation of RDS, RDS had done everything they were required to do. And so therefore, it is incumbent upon this council to move beyond RDS because we have, we have a foundation. And for these businesses to be as delinquent as they are, it is truly at our feet.
Yes. Let me, let me ask, because I've always been here with RDS, um, and so we've had the state before. That was, was delinquent accounts, was the state able to go in and be checking down that would only be the council?
Not during the time, not during the time, uh, when, during my tenure, when we had the state, um, there was a lot of delinquent taxes out there. But when, uh, I don't recall the state going in, checking any, um, business down. Not during the time that, you know, we had.
Can you determine before I vote if that's a norm that they're assuming, that do they go in and make their own work?
I can't because I know.
Because I just know.
They have more enforcement power, you know, than the state.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, well, you know, at certain times, but if we're getting more money, you know, we're not worried about it. Certain times, at the end of the year, they may be closed because we're getting additional funds if that's the form of the work that they can do.
And also too, with the timely reports, I mean, far as, there was a major contrast between RDS made reports and the state's made reports.
I'm, you know, I'm used to RDS. I really like, um, what they do on the county side. I, I receive reports from them.
You know, timely, now.
Oh, every, no later than it would be a month. And so I'm, I'm used to RDS, but I'm not on that arm that I can actually see or that part, um, that I would actually see what's not being remitted on the county side. And so saying, and so I see what's not being remitted on the city side, I'm a little concerned.
Yeah, because I think, you know, we need to put more teeth into, uh, our collection process. Because if you're looking at the county, I mean, what's the contrast? If, if the county can receive their taxes, why isn't the city receiving the same, with the same company?
Let me, let me, let me ask you something, um, with this, with this, um, contract, are they going to, if you're saying, we're, if they don't have business license, we're going to bring before the council, we're going to, going to assist them.
It's an ordinance.
So you're doing that ordinance, but what does that do to the back taxes? Is there ordinance, so what does they do in Magar? I know when I first got here, you all were talking about something they did in Magar where they brought the businesses before the council or something. Can we look at that?
Yeah, I did ask for that ordinance, uh, far as whether the neighborhood, you know, having to pay the taxes. Uh, so we'll be emailing them that ordinance tomorrow.
So I mean, I think we.
It's going to be, it's going to be a dual ordinance.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm making sure. That we, we're getting from not on the license side, but the passage. Because they may actually have their license. They may have released their license and still not paying.
Yes, sir.
I mean, so if we're just looking at.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's going to be a dual ordinance, so we don't have both. And we're putting on first reading at the council meeting, both ordinances.
And also, another thing that can help us too, um, with the business operating now. And we have people in, uh, we have someone in the tax collector's office. Uh, can we, uh, make sure that there, that this time that we have people out here checking? To make sure, because there shouldn't be no reason that this, this city should, with the list, you know, I'm just saying, when I'm looked at. Uh, someone should never be operating this long without having their license.
That's true. I do concur with you, but keep in mind also, uh, we had three new fire investigators.
Mm-hmm.
They can also, um, double with a license inspector because they had to go out there and inspect the, inspect, you know, the buildings. So maybe that can be something with the fire investigators could also come into play and inspect the licenses and stuff.
Well, I thought the chief said at the meeting, we were asking the, the fire inspectors to do something and he said they wouldn't have time for it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just suggesting.
Oh, he did, he said, right, he did, he said it. Um, I'm not sure if it's the taxes, but we said, well, we got fire inspectors, can they do this?
Because they have to go and inspect the building.
And I know that would be an arm of the executive.
Yeah, it will be, yeah.
And then that would help too, uh, with the.
That's a long shot. That's just my way of thinking.
Yes, sir.
But I'm just saying, with the young man that you have in there.
Synergy.
The young man that we have in there, is it his duty to make sure, we need to know, is he fully out there hitting the ground, going and checking? Because, uh, you know, we have, uh, we do need to, as, we need to have somebody going out to make sure.
I do concur with you.
So it's our duty as to, uh, the tax collector, the department here person in there, to make sure that we, we're doing the follow-up on this.
But also too, at my request, you know, RDS, um, recently, they have been doing seminars, uh, you know, with the business owners, how to remit taxes.
How did the one happen? Did, did, did the business owner go to the one you had here?
Yeah, they had about six businesses.
Six business?
To show up, yeah.
Mr. President, that contract.
Well, it, it's up for us to set the parameters. It can be a year, even two years. I think it should, I mean, in the past, we did a year and then, uh.
Renew this year. Renew the area.
Yes, sir.
What comes up for, it's not automatic.
No, it's not automatic, we know we. On year-to-year. Okay.
All right.
Um, I'm, I'm actually pulling up this report that, that, um, he sent, Mr. President. I was looking, um, to make sure that, um, we, to concur with, um, Councilwoman Thomas, um, yeah, thirty-eight pages. I didn't want to, um, quote it wrong. And these, these fonts are not, maybe a ten, twelve font. And so this is, well, these are a lot of businesses. And some may not actually be in operation, but we need to determine that.
And, and also.
My thing is too, for coming to you, Councilwoman Thomas, if the instances are currently defunct, why are they part of the report?
Okay, now, last thing, two persons, you need to look at too. Some of the business owners said that they have, they haven't received their license. They have paid the money, but you need to find out why, why is it that they haven't received their license yet? Because some of them saying that they, they paid.
Mr. President, I do, I do think, I do think that's been a concerted effort. By RDS to get the taxes that are due to the city, and, and as I recall, when I first got on the council, there was some issue about that. And the report I was looking at had over, uh, half a million dollars. Now today, that thing is down to what, a hundred and twenty thousand? So that's, that's, it might have been collected, but still, the delinquency still, uh, should be where it is. So I think, I think, I think if the message get out that the city of Selma is open for business, but they're not going to be allowed to, businesses to be, uh, delinquent and paying their just taxes to the city.
Let me make sure I understand that you're correct, Mr. Councilman LaShur. You were stating that RDS has collected over four hundred, approximately four hundred thousand dollars in the last two years on our delinquency?
Well, what I'm saying is that the report that I saw about the liquid taxes, two, two years ago, had over five-hundred fifty-some thousand dollars of delinquency. That number is down.
So they collect?
For that guy was a hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I'd like to see that.
I can, I make sure you get proper.
He emailed it to us.
He emailed it. Did I, I think I emailed it.
He emailed it to us.
What, did you email that? I'm looking to email that.
Let me pull it up.
I tried it. I printed them all out, just as I done it, so. But I'm, I'm human, I could have missed it.
Y'all just there with me?
That's seven hundred and thirty-nine right now. I don't believe anything. So if, if you sent it, I gather.
Because whenever a report is generated from RDS, uh, try it forward to the council.
You, you sent us that report. I may have deleted.
But if not, I, it won't be a problem.
We don't need to hold anything, uh, actually, just put that with it.
Somebody's trying to call me.
But if not, I'll forward it.
Okay.
But it, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, that's awesome.
Five fifty.
Uh, that's awesome. Is that, yeah, that's right.
Contract probably, we might read this, I think.
All right.
I believe you do.
Next, we have a YMCA contract. Roughly, um, the contract, uh, ended in February.
February nineteen.
February nineteen. February nineteen.
Yes.
And the past several years, I think, we have been recruiting roughly about a hundred and.
Forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Uh, we're looking at, um, a dollar going to the Brown and a dollar going to the Johnson Walker. Um, we're looking at an average of one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So it's up for the council to see do we want to move forward with it, uh, continue the contract or, uh.
Whatever.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Be some bond payment. There could be some police calls.
If I may, Mr. President.
Walkers.
You know, uh, prior to the renewal of the last contract, that contract was renewed every year. But because of the financial, the city was being strained and, and because the money needed to go in other areas of maintaining city government. The council opted to do a two-year contract, uh, for the YMCA, but then served notice that after two years, that this council may not be inclined to extend it.
That's right.
Uh, I think the, I think the, the concession was given two years ago.
Yes, sir.
That we're not going to be in favor of renewing this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and of course, it's determined upon nine votes of the councils, which we, we would go. But I, I do think that's when Mr. Speed, that man.
Came before.
Came before. That's why I want this council to be straightforward with this man because what I was hearing from my colleagues that there may be some opportunities for renewal. When in fact, the, the general consensus that we were not going to go forward with this contract. So I think we just need to be true to who we are. I don't think this contract gives you the.
Taco, cook?
I'm with you. We need money.
We, we, we have needs around, on in the city right now. And, uh, we make sure we, that we're sure of. We help, we help as much as we can and I, and I just think, what some of the council members have said previously is that, you know, the city of Selma has helped tremendously over the years with, in wealth of agencies. And the, the moment and the time that we can't help or we say no, then everyone's angry. But we've given years, um, to this end. Right now, we need to make sure that we're stable financially. We need to make sure that we have, um, things in place and ensure some of the debt that we're incurring is going to be paid. Employees, um, receiving their checks too. And so there are so many things that are, that has happened that hadn't happened two years ago. We had six, eight more employees do it two years ago. And so, um, there's a whole lot that's going on there.
Even two years ago, during the discussion, we told the Y that we're going to extend it for two years. That would give us an opportunity to search out other resources.
That's right.
Because after two years, and these are the words, this city may not be inclined to renew it.
Yes.
And so, uh, this is what we are.
This is what we are.
Councilwoman.
I have another question to ask you. First of all, do, are, do we earmark any other, uh, uh, money to any other, uh, organization? Agency? And, and, uh, I'd like to know, some of these agencies that for many years that the city has earmarked money to, with the situation that we have now, uh, can we kind of find out?
We can. I'll go back. I'll take a look at the contracts. I know the only contract I don't think we can get out far as with agents is at the Library and, uh, I think Alabama. Because I know the Library is one, uh.
I think.
That's for Hohman. Yeah, I asked the, um, the attorney before he left if he could give me a copy of all those contracts. They're not earmarked.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
Because I know at the top, I know the Library, um, Kahalmanahell.
But every little bit counts.
But I'm saying, so the biggest one that we were doing, were the two with the, with the YMCA, with the money that?
Well, I'm going to say that's the biggest.
I'm going to say the biggest, but, uh, it was a substantial amount.
I think we created that. That was before us.
And we had, we had, uh, a separate amount then set aside for the Brown. So there's money set aside for the Brown now. We're going to have to decide what we're going to do with that money. And who's, I, I got a recommendation.
What's your recommendation?
What, what would that be?
My recommendation is because this money was reserved for activities for youth. And because the evidence is coming up with a very refined community building that will do the same thing, that we direct that money to, to you for that, for that purpose.
Mr. President?
That's a good idea, but you and I think.
May I say something?
Yes, please, let me.
Go ahead.
I thought, I have been trying to keep up, I thought we used a hundred and, and, uh, approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that earmarked money.
There's still money in that account.
Yeah, but then we turned around and went back in there and got.
I think it's sixty thousand in that account now.
It is. Sixty thousand.
The sixty thousand? Okay, so we need to use that money towards the.
Sixty thousand ain't going to have no work. Because if y'all had adopted what I recommended, then we could have helped. He's thirty-one.
Uh, so we, we have a, a. Uh, so we, we have a, a process of non-contract, these, these are the contracts here in all the different amounts. Um, however, the Evernites has not come to the city and asked for those funds. Um, they're building a glorious, thank God, three-million-dollar facility over there. And their budget is approximately thirteen million dollars. It's almost as much as the city. And so, um, we always need help from the Evernites. So, to, to divert the funds that they already have plans for, they haven't said they need any more money. To them, I, I think, not wise.
Let's say a few, let's say a few K O M A to see can we...
See if they can divert some.
Or some of that money over there.
So, you know, they haven't said anything.
They haven't. They really didn't. But they, they're not in need. They haven't said, we need this from you all at this time. So, I think they're building that three-million-dollar facility. They didn't come to the city of Selma and say, and doing, building a three-million-dollar facility. We would like for you to send the, the half, um, of the...
I mean, they're not in need, 'cause they didn't come requesting it, you know, sometime, you know, uh...
Well, they're building, they're doing a forty-million-dollar project on Broad Street. As soon as we start building a forty-million-dollar project, we can't determine whether we can pay forty thousand.
Well, I'm just making a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I just wanna...
Show the gratitude, the city of Selma for all the help the Evernites have given us.
We appreciate the Evernites, and let's all get caught and thank them and ask them to continue investing. But at this time, and I pay for the cost, let's not even get it out the city cost.
I got you.
All right. Next, we have, uh, license fees. I reviewed a lot of, uh, license fees that we're currently receiving. And I know, uh, the majority of my flat rate, and it's based on the percentage of revenue. Uh, but one that, a couple of them that basically stood out was, hopefully, we can just go there and move forward and maybe increase. One of them was the contractor's license. They're only paying sixty-seven dollars, uh, for a contractor's license.
Sixty-seven? Oh, when you say the sixty-seven dollars for the contract license, is, are you saying like, uh, a company, a general?
Sixty-seven.
Company?
You can look off, you can look at the business, like, yeah, sixty-seven.
For a general?
Yeah. I think we definitely need for a contractor's license, go up to about two-fifty. That is the mid, that's a mid-range of other cities about this size. Because for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they get one property job, they can, they can make that easy.
So, so when you say that, uh, it'll be specified for, uh, you know, like big business general?
Two-fifty, yeah. Another, uh, something that we definitely need to look at also is the, uh, barber shops and also the mills. Uh, currently, each chair in a barber shop and also a mill place is only seventeen dollars.
Seventeen?
Seventeen dollars.
Oh, wow.
Uh, my projection probably be each barber chair and also each mill chair a hundred dollars. Because that would also help with the business license and, uh, a hundred dollars per chair. Yes, sir.
Could you put together a listing?
I will.
Of all the businesses that we're paying out versus what you're recommending?
Okay, I will.
Bring that to our work session so that we can marinate over that.
Yeah, I guess. I'll type it up. Okay. Uh, and one thing also, after working in Ward Three, I didn't know so many people in Selma drank.
Yes.
Beer bars everywhere.
We clean up so much.
Uh, I know, uh, license for beer and our license for wine is currently seventy-five dollars. Uh, for a license, it would probably be best, we go up to about one-fifty.
Yeah, that's cheap.
About one-fifty.
That's a lot of money.
Taco, you can come higher than one-fifty, I mean...
I'm just trying to be modest, I'm just throwing it out there.
You saw how much we collect.
Yeah.
So, it's not, they, they make one-fifty now.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not trying to, but that is a lot. Um, and it, it's a lot of beer and alcohol being sold, and then we're not...
And we clean up a lot, too.
I see one thing that I'm, I'm also trying to collect the data, um, is to impose a sand tax. But I have to get the information first, uh...
Do you know that we currently have a sand, sand tax?
No, I don't.
Do we have a what tax?
Sand tax.
Sand tax?
You know, know that we currently have one of those, this is... In another February, they're getting that thousand bucks from the town.
Uh, yeah. But that's something we definitely need to look at. Uh, you know, as a tobacco product, you know, we're not, we're thinking, wow, you just knock, knock the wind out of them.
I just, I just found out today, I'm telling you. When it comes to those finances, I ask a whole lot of questions. Yeah.
But that's trying to get the information and data to see how much it would be. I don't know, would it be in the best interest if we charge the distributors, uh, get it off the top? Uh, but I had a meeting with some of the, um, store owners and also club owners, trying to get their input about how they felt about the sand tax. But it may not be to our best interest, after I do the cost analysis to see, uh, would we benefit from it? Because in the past, we have a lot of, you know, um, entertainment establishments and, uh, at this point in time, it's not done then, so...
And it does.
I'm gonna do a cost analysis just to see.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask you this. When you're talking about the, um, that tax, you're not just talking about to the entertainment establishments. You're talking about establishments, you're talking about the gas stations.
Restaurants, yeah.
The restaurants, restaurants. So, any, any place that we see.
Any place, yeah.
So, I don't, yeah. I think that, when I think about, um, businesses that sell, you know, maybe they don't, you don't need to take it higher. But I was thinking initially just the gas stations.
And that's more of a, that's more of an involuntary tax.
And so, when they, when they, when they come in with their license, you know, I don't hold on, on the license, but that'd be a requirement that they purchase not on the business license, but their, uh, license for the company before us, and then I hand that pay before we approve it.
Yes. Because like I said, I have a committee also, uh, business owners and restaurant owners helping me draft this, uh, to see what it'd be to, to our best.
And I think, you know, um...
That's a great idea.
See, see what it'd be to our best, uh, before we go before. 'Cause I know Mr. Hendrick, he can give us some great input on that. Also, um, top of, uh, Representative Chestner and, um, Ms. Forty Eight, about seeing can we move forward with this Evermore tax during this session? Just talking with them to see, uh, do we need to move forward, to see what they can drive, as just earmarking for public safety and public work.
I'm going to have the call back, because I was informed, it was a couple of months ago, and I don't remember off the top of my head. But I was informed that we're in the last stage of a increase that was done by the state in Dallas County and some of the surrounding counties. Evermore was in the fourth phase of that. So, we're gonna get an increase this year anyway.
Okay.
Uh, from the state that had been passed four years ago. Now, I don't remember the amount or anything, but I'll, I'll make sure I call the Texas Census Office tomorrow. But I do remember them saying twenty-nineteen is gonna be an increase in the tax rate, because this was something that was done four, five years ago. And they did it in stages, I guess, just like the...
The gas tax.
Just like they're doing the gas tax, that they're running it out on stages. And so, we, we're actually gonna hit ours this year.
Yeah, but that, but that amount might be so min- minute. It's just like the gasoline tax that the state pays. The city, the city's gonna get some money, but it's not gonna be annually enough to pay one street. So, I do think we need to look at revenue streams, cities have a lot, and bring about some new revenue streams, streams in our city. Here was also another amount in fourth, fifth phase from the state or not. I guarantee you, if it comes from the state, our amount is gonna be so minute, it's not gonna be what they're talking about.
That's why I asked, you know, to have to look at, to look into it.
And I, and I hear what you're saying, but when you're looking at an increase, an increase is an increase, no matter how minute it is, you have to look at the people that it's going to impact. The cost of, we don't wanna go into a battle that we can't win. It's gonna have to go before the people that it's going to impact, and we're going to have to pay for that.
Well, you have to say to the people anyway.
Right.
So, if the people don't understand the needs of this city and add it up, then that's a woe to them.
Well, it may not be that they don't understand the needs, it may not be they don't agree with what we do with the money here.
That's the problem.
I don't always agree what we do with the money here.
Well, you're gonna find that everywhere, you know, you're gonna find, you're nothing to do with it. And the fact is, you gotta run the city.
Right.
And you need money to run the city, that's a fact.
And I understand that. What I would like to use, uh, President, you can make this whole amount that the increase is going to be, since we don't know that that's going to be an impact on our, uh, homeowners and our, and our, giving some services and things on. And so, I wanna get you that amount, to see what we're gonna, going to get out of it. Um, if it's a law, we're gonna raise our taxes fifty dollars, and then we put another fifty on top of it.
And, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of people, they, you have a lot of people, you have a lot of people know that we need to, but they still wanna know where the money is, where it's going.
What's that now?
I say you, if, if, from here and from the community, a lot of people know we need taxes. But a lot of people wanna know where's the money going?
Transplantation.
Yes, and that, that's the problem, what I see.
Chicken balance, chicken balance, transplantation.
Yes, that's the biggest problem, right, I hear, what I see.
Also, too, um, during the Jubilee, if you can receive, if you look at the report for vendors, we receive four thousand and fifty dollars. Uh, we already have an ordinance, uh, currently have an ordinance for vendors, uh, fifty dollars. I think it would be in best interest if we moved that fifty dollars up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for vendors.
And please bring that back as a recommendation, because that was a recommendation from the Jubilee Committee, at least a hundred, and, um, they asked us to hold off.
Hundred and twenty-five dollars?
So, I think a hundred and forty-five would be...
Who said four thousand and fifty, ready?
It's, it's on that.
He gave it to her.
It's in that report, yeah, it's four thousand and fifty dollars. And also, I think it was on, you know, the report, two parts with the building inspectors.
Mm-hmm.
I think...
He didn't, he didn't give us a report on that one, he just told them.
I seen it on, on, on some...
It's, it was to that delinquent, no, then, if you will, put it up with the delinquent license.
It's with the delinquent, yeah, that's what I seen.
It was four thousand and fifty dollars, that was the Jubilee, and, uh, if we look at roughly, for about a hundred and twenty-five dollars going up for, uh, vendors fees. But like I said, I will pack up these registered businesses.
Mr. President, since we were talking about fees, Mr. President, we gotta get a hold of our garbage situation in this city, Mr. President. You know, I do, I do recall, I don't, I don't lie true, that maybe you can shine some light on this. I think, um, Mayor Evans had hired a young lady by the name of Jessica Chestner, who's since passed on. And to my understanding, her primary function was to go out and knock on the folk toes, inquire about who lives in this house, and ask the proverbial question, do you have a garbage receptacle? And if they didn't, then they would be, uh, told that they're required by law and given a certain amount of time to get that garbage can. I don't think that has continued here. We need to talk to the mayor about getting that, uh, responsibility reserved, because I'm gonna tell you, that's the only way we're gonna solve our garbage problem. These people who don't have garbage receptacles, they are the violators of dumping of other garbage throughout the entire city, war one through eight. So, we gotta get a hold of this garbage, and I think that would be, the mayor's plan to do that, I wanna come in here for that. The mayor now need to take up that and move forward with it, so we can get a hold of this garbage.
It's a policy of life issue, not so a health issue, uh, council.
And also another thing, too, as, as, um, um, Councilwoman Shure, uh, for the past two years I've been in, in, in this seat, I, when we started with that problem, a lot of our people were able to get garbage, but they didn't know the procedures. What I did was, we have a lot of, you know, you get a lot of people on disability, social security. Every year around that time of October, I would always specify with them to keep them to know, like you said, knock on doors, which I do have a time, I do that. And this is how I build mine up in my community, by me as a representative going out, knocking on people's doors and letting them know. And a lot of people didn't know how to feel the people out. A lot of people didn't know it was that easy to go and get a copy of their disability, social security income, and, 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 and take it, and get, that's how they got garbage. So, it takes, it takes some of us to help them.
I want to commend you for your effort, and I wanna applaud you for doing, I wanna recommend you continue to do, but this is not the function of council folks. This is the responsibility of the executive branch of government to ensure that the cleaners in the city is, is, is done. And I think that's why we have given control of our garbage problem.
Yes.
Is to have a point person.
Then, I, I understand what you're saying.
To identify households that we not have.
But we have had, we had this before, and, uh, we had code enforcers at the time. There were people that were hired from the city, that were going out, uh, working in the community, knocking on doors and saying, you know, Jane Doe don't have a trash can.
Excuse, what happened was, uh, after Ms., uh...
Chestner.
Chestner, it was, uh, Mrs. Stevens.
It brought Stevens in.
Stevens, yeah.
And then Stevens was going, and he would reroute it.
He was promoting.
But, but, but...
That's a centralized location.
But if his function was brought back into play, I guarantee you, with a little time, our garbage problem would be resolved.
Well, if you...
Go ahead, yeah.
If you recall, and I actually brought this up at the, at the council, um, on, at the council work session, that was one of my items, because I had information from Ms. Marge Brooks, and we had just finished another cleanup. And what I said was, I, and I have a contract sealed here, that I got a contract, um, from Seacoast. They informed me that this was a part of the contract, and that we were actually in violation of our contract. And so, that's why I wanted to present it to the mayor, make him aware. Now, I read over the contract, um, and it's, it was printed off their lab, but they didn't email me a copy. And it, it was all that I had, and he said, sorry, it's, it's that bad, so, but I didn't read it in there. And it could have been that it was so bad that I just didn't see it, um, because some of the pages, you just couldn't see the words. So, I didn't see it in the contract. No one could tell me if it was actually a contractual thing, or it was something that the, uh, mayor, the previous mayor...
I think Evans, he just entered into, uh, that agreement. That was his piece that he put into place to make sure, to try to curb all this activity.
Right, and so, that may, may have been something that he did. I did, um, inform the mayor that Mr. Hendricks was in that position, and he was doing it. He made me aware that we defunded that position. And, uh, I stated to him that we defunded the position, because no one was in that waste management position. But we had someone in code enforcement, if you recall, that was actually doing those functions and, and fulfilling that. Uh, I think the first month on duty, it went up like fifty, uh, garbage, first couple of months, uh, that we went up, but we sparked fifty new, um, households with garbages. Um, it has gone down since three-hundred and one.
Give me a copy of that contract, and as chair, as chair of the Public Way General Service Committee, I will assemble my committee and ask the mayor to attend, to let him know how distraught we are about the garbage situation in our community.
Thank you.
And we have come to the conclusion that if we get back to the plan, and that is to have a point person who, whose primary job is to identify homeowners who don't have a receptacle, I think our garbage problem can be resolved. This is my comment.
That's the only comment I can, it's bad.
What?
Because you can see, you can hardly see it. It's a bad copy, so you can actually, I've read it.
I don't need it.
Right, I've read. You can read it, but it's just a little light that you can't see on it.
I, 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 I...
But this is the only thing they had on that day.
And Ms. Harrison got a copy of that contract.
I'm not sure.
I, I...
I was in there to get a copy here, that's why I went to register to Seacoast.
I'll inquire from Ms. Harrison to see if she got a copy. And then I'll inquire from the executive office to see if they got a copy, and I will get a copy. And then I will convene the Public Way General Service Committee to, uh, specifically talk about garbage. Because I'm telling y'all, we gotta start talking about that. We gotta put some things in place to eradicate, so it's, 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 it's time over.
Councilwoman, come on.
Come.
Councilwoman.
Uh, yeah, and another thing, too, we need to focus on, too, these contractors that, uh, are going out here cleaning, uh, got their own business, which they are, uh, coming out, cutting trees down and debris, and putting it on city right away when they have a contract, the license contract to haul this away to the landfill. Uh, I had a problem today with this, and I want us to, we need to focus on that, because they need to be, they need to be fine, but they make the community look bad. Uh, you, you hire by someone else to cut down their trees and clean their lawn off, and then you bring it, and, uh, you don't even live in this area, and you put it on city right away. Uh, I had a problem this evening with that, I had to call the police.
Indeed, I'll talk to them about that.
All right, uh, or the council?
Mr. President, we received a purchase order report, you know, excited about receiving this, since I've been asking for it, um, since October. And, um, there are a few things that I noticed that I wanna get, see if we have clarification on. Did we not state that any contracts have to come through the council, no matter the size? I know one time we said five thousand dollars, anything, um, five thousand and under, the mayor could do. But I thought we went back in another vote and said all, um, contracts must come before the council. That was my regulation.
Because I think where they came up, we can do five thousand in increments.
Yeah, we, we were receiving that there were five thousand increments, um, things in five thousand dollar increments being paid, but it was actually to the same company, it was over five thousand dollars. I looked through this report, I came in early...
I looked through this report, I came in early today, so I can sit in here in, um, some quiet time, and look through the report, and I see that we, um, have purchase orders for, uh, companies, that I know we had to enter into a contract to pay them, um, forty-four hundred dollars. And things nineteen hundred dollars, I think, and so I know, um, that by the.
What department's there?
Um, let me look, I see, I highlight them, hold on.
Yeah, I guess I, we received it this afternoon, correct?
Yes, eleven forty-eight and fifty-six seconds is when it came on mine. I was too busy at work, I didn't, couldn't get to my laptop, I didn't read it all. Um, I wanna say that it was public works, um, it's fourteen pages, I'm trying to get, yes.
Public work?
Four thousand four hundred dollars on two twenty-six nineteen. And so that's, that had, that had been a contract.
That was a contract that had been recent.
I'm looking at the, what the work that was done. I've had similar work done, and I had to enter into a contract, and so, less public work, that would have been, I don't know.
What's the description?
Um, well, we give you a page, oh, you're not looking at it. I'd rather not give a description, doesn't know who it is. Uh, I don't, I don't know if we can share that openly, so I don't want to.
All right.
Carve in the hair.
I might have to look that up also.
That's over too.
All right.
And also, with this purchase order report, I wanted to, um, I had a couple of questions about it, because I saw items that, um. So we look at this report that we received from the mayor's office, um, said purchase order report, so a hundred and thirty-seven thousand four nine two forty-three. And so the email says, this is the purchase orders, they equate to the hundred and thirty-seven four nine two forty-three. Um, and if you recall, the mayor, um, stated that these are the amounts coming, um, from the city general fund, and these are the anticipated revenues, and, you know, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. But I saw some items that actually are not coming out of general fund, did you, did you notice that? And so if they're not coming out of general fund, then that actually means that we have more money in the fund.
I think, I think we need to find out where all of that, what was found in our bill that was being stacked up.
Um.
See how they liquidated that, all this.
They say that all past due bills have been paid. And so, um, that's, that's what they stated, that's what I understood. That's what I understood, and so these are the, the purchase order, but I don't want to, what I don't wanna have happen is that we're saying, um, that we only have, or, um, in the general fund, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand one fifty-six sixteen. Um, because they're taking these purchase orders amount out of there, um, when some of these purchase orders are not from the general fund.
He said, you, you remember when he said, uh, before, came before, he said, half those, uh, purchases are, are dealing with the police car from.
And that's not true.
Well, that's what he stated. He said the biggest of our deal, this hundred and thirty-seven, uh, thousand dollars is dealing with the repair of the police car.
Uh, he did state that, and I thank you, um, for reminding me of that, and I see that the police department has a total of fifty-six thousand dollars, but it doesn't, I've gone through it. And I've looked at the amount that they're spending on, uh, maintenance. And that's not the bulk of this report. Uh, so if the fifty-six thousand dollars is coming from their department, would be the bulk of the one thirty-seven, I would think, but, um, the bulk of the fifty-six thousand dollars is, and this is me not looking at every, everything, so don't quote me. Uh, but it appears that we have just as much, um, K-nine vaccination, just as much, many guns, just many K-nine equipment, as, as we have police department repairs. So I don't see that we have fifty or sixty thousand dollars, or the greater percentage of the hundred and thirty-seven is the police department. Vehicle computer equipment, forty thousand dollars? Forty thousand six seventy-one oh five, now that, unless that's a repair.
He said, you remember.
But the description says vehicle computer equipment.
Remember, he told us that, uh.
So they.
And so, unless that, but the other one says maintenance or vehicle repair. Um, look at this one, says, um, auto repair, um, it says the, the, the company name, it says six hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then I have another one that says, um, service to the police department, and it's nineteen ninety-nine. Um, I did find a, I should have asked the chief while he was here, nine thousand dollar deal, nine thousand nine hundred dollar deal, uh, for the police department. But it was from, um, looked like it was done on an affidavit. And so the bulk may be the police department, but it's not vehicle maintenance, that's not what I mean.
Yeah, but he told us when he came.
But I only had, like, an hour and a half to review this before we came in. So, um, there it is. Labor and material, police department.
So what kind of?
Advisors.
What's gonna happen?
Nine thousand dollars. At one twenty-three nineteen, printed on two four nineteen. Um, uniforms for the police department, two thirty-nine, so I have it, I, I take time and add it all up in the next work session. Um, but it doesn't appear right offhand that that's the bulk, that we, that we have thirty thousand dollars in, uh, vehicle repairs.
And another thing too, uh, anything else, Councilman? Also too, another avenue that we can explore as far as with new revenue stream, uh, the license plates, that we get, if we can put a percentage. But I need to go into the damn numbers, how much we're currently, you know, paying for the city settlement, if we can just get a percentage or a flat rate. But I need to go in on do, cost analysis, see how much that would, you know, bring in also.
Think it's a good time to talk about that deal you and I discussed a little bit.
Yes, we definitely, and they need to, and I'm bringing up one more thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, we got this report, um, a snapshot of where we are in our finances from the mayor, um, as of March eleventh. And the invoices, which we didn't get a copy of, um, it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. That's invoices that have been entered for payment, um, by March eleventh. You know, the purchase orders is one thirty-seven, and we got, um, the purchase orders, and some of these purchase orders, um, date back, I think I saw one printed back as far as, um, November, yeah, I see a couple. Um, for, as far as November, but I wanna see, we, we entering to pay this four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so I wanna see those invoices. You know, going forward, we should, if we've seen all, everything that's, we're paying, we should look at the purchase orders, and by the purchase order, we should be able to determine what we're paying. But if we're paying four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, five hundred, four twenty-five, five thirty-five, seventy-eight, in one month, I think that we should have a look at that, to see what that entails.
How, how far along is the mayor on with this new IT checkbook, document that's on?
He said two more weeks.
He said about two more weeks.
Two more weeks. That's what he said.
He said about two more weeks.
And doesn't that cost us?
I was just like, how mu- how much is that?
Forty thousand.
Well.
Forty-five thousand, I know it's only forty.
Yeah, forty-five thousand.
Cause I did a little research.
Is that the one time thing?
For the duties.
It could be, man. It could, cause I'm pursuing, I could, oh, they, every so often, that fee, yearly fee, it, it seems to me.
It said forty.
I'll be vying with them, I don't know them.
Well, whatever the cost is gonna be, minor will spend, it's gonna put the rest, some of these, in your endos, so those people who have an opportunity, go ahead and see the finances of the city, they have access themselves.
Okay, I, well, I, to that point, I don't think it actually put it to rest, I think show we would have provided the citizens with the information they request, along with the council. Um, they could have brought in their, uh, drop out and provided that, that way, that would have, um, eliminated us spending forty-five, fifty thousand dollars, and then having the current fee every year. But I'm thinking to myself, why are we spending?
That kind of money.
That much money when we haven't had a training to ensure that they are putting in the information in a manner that will cause them more questions? If I receive, if I receive something that says nine thousand dollars for police affidavits.
They don't wanna know.
And I'm like, is that in the building? Is that two cars that broke down that needed affidavits? I mean, I don't know, what, what is that? And if I look at some of the things that have been, um, that we received, like oversized door in the, uh, welcome center, I've been to the door, we stayed eleven thousand dollars. That opened up more questions, like, um, fifteen thousand dollars for building repairs, and all you put on there was building repairs, like, what building did you repair? And so I think if we, if we don't correct internally the things that we should, um, building repairs on the convention center to the move.
Let's do it like this, why don't we just wait until he has confirmed that he had got this, uh, IT document in place? And then he will have a training or workshop to go and dip with what is all about being disseminated over worldwide with.
Would this be up on the New World?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, would, would.
It will be upon that.
And so these are where they're already generating reports and already putting the information, and what it's going to do is work seamlessly with the information that they're currently putting into the system, and it's going to put it out. So if that's the case, again, I assert that we need to make sure that they're putting as much information as possible, not to, uh, open up a new.
But, but my thing is, should we have an IT department that can write a query, band-aid all that, I mean, put this stuff in?
I, I think once again, we didn't need to wait until he has found.
I think we shouldn't have voted.
Oh, we didn't?
We voted on that, yeah.
We haven't voted to purchase. No, I can't throw it.
We haven't voted that.
She just, he just.
He just brought it.
Just brought it before, it's, it's.
He was showing people what this, uh.
So you, are you sure?
We didn't vote on that.
We didn't vote on it.
You sure?
I know, that happened.
We didn't vote.
I think we'll find out with the actual cost, we'll also get ready to launch it.
Launch it, I ain't on the launch it, but we hadn't voted for the purchase.
We didn't vote it.
I said, when he gets ready to launch it, then.
When he, when he gets ready to bring a pro.
I, I guess what he did, he did a little soft.
He showed it.
When, when he brought it for us.
But you all didn't vote.
No.
No, you didn't vote.
I was out of town, I'm just trying to make sure.
The first thing I wanted to ask was, you know, I mean, we.
We just went back and did some research on it.
All they need to do is to inform us of what is, is planned.
It's planned for us.
To show transparency about the finance of the city, is to make it available to the public on the city, um, channel.
Yeah, and on that, he said you could be able to go on your phone, or your computer, if you wanna see in any of that information.
Okay, I have someone to prove, and like I mentioned to y'all, the policy of the season management, almost do that, I bring it before the council, we go ahead and move forward to vote on that, uh.
You're gonna make the change, isn't it?
Yep, so I'm gonna need to.
It is a bit.
I mean, what's, who's gonna make the changes?
Council. Cause you know, it's the ultimate decision for us, just like with the personnel.
Have we met to make this change?
No.
When?
Once I get the, finish to get the final copy of.
We don't have a work session.
We don't have a work session strictly just for that, okay?
Uh, uh, Mr. President, would you put inside, um, that, or, you say we can take this up at the, at the financial committee meeting, the, um, the, um, let's see, how do I say this? We have individual states going to the financial department requesting they check to be, um, ran in the off-run status, um, that, actual date. And they said that it was their practice to only, um, run checks on the fifteenth and third. Um, and so, they say they don't do it, because council members and others come in and request, I need a check now, I need one tomorrow, I'm sorry I'm late, I need it at this moment.
Who you put that?
And we need to make sure that we.
Fifteenth and third, suffer pay, pay the pay here.
Yeah, they said payroll, they always do, but those other, um, checks that they run outside of payroll, um, the AP checks is what you call them, um, the AP checks.
That can be costly too.
Yes, every time you.
Every time you run one, then.
Right.
Yeah, 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 but you need a provision, because you never know from day to day what's gonna happen. You don't need to lock yourself into that policy. What I'm trying to say is, there need to be some kind of way where you, as the president, could, uh, uh, do the mayor's discretion request that we get a check like we need it right now. You follow what I'm saying, you don't need to have a, a diehard policy where you're locking yourself in from being able to do a regular business, uh, Monday through Friday.
Well, I'm, well, I'm going to say this, uh, in the county, if you don't bring it by Tuesday at eleven o'clock, they're not running. They have a cutoff date, and I've brought something that's way a third, and I say, oh, you get it the following week, I got another week and a half to wait. And so what they've expressed to me is that it makes it more difficult, and it causes for more, and more, um, reasons or, uh, things whereby people can do something that they shouldn't.
Cause I know, far.
And I'm just saying mistakes, I won't say.
Yeah, cause I know.
What else they might have.
When miss.
But there needs to be a hard fast rule, the other cities have that, that in place, it's a hard fast rule.
I guarantee you, no cities got an escape route for those things that's out, that's out of order, I guarantee you, they're not tying themselves down to that iron claim.
I just don't.
I guarantee they're not tying themselves down to the iron claim.
Okay, well, let's, let's look into that, but I think we should initially tie ourselves down to an iron claim rule, since we have so many people that go in and say, this was, they expressed to me, we have people, council, because I can ask about the incident. We got Tracy, was here, where she said, don't write a check, and they said, we're gonna, we were going to write a check because this person asked us, and why was that done? Um, why did you write a check at that time, and they said, we do it for everybody else, including council members, and that can't be the practice. We have to be professionals, and professionals look at things long-term, they look at things in order, and they, they don't wait till the last minute.
Well, it's been a standard practice, I know prior to when Miss, uh, Mitchell was here, uh, she stuck to her guard.
She stuck to that.
But, but I know y'all, it's, I know, it's a caveat in that.
Y'all tying yourselves down to an iron claim.
We're gonna look at it.
It's gonna be some incident, you're gonna, we should never done.
I'm, we're gonna look into it.
It's just like you have, like, I had an emergency, um, incident, I had an emergency over in my ward, and, uh, you know, uh, um, you know what we're gonna do right now.
Yeah.
And, and when you can get somebody to come in and take care of that issue, but that, but it did wait, the person did the job, and they did wait to.
The two weeks.
Well, they didn't wait to two weeks, so how we had it in that area coming up to the paint pier.
Okay, so.
When, when, when they finish up, uh, they waited a couple of days.
Anyway.
And, uh, they were able to get this.
That's a good example, now, every contractor may not be willing to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Every contractor might say, I want my money.
Yeah, once they finish.
And it's in the downtime, you're not within your policy, so what you've done, you tied yourself, you tied your hands for being able to do, being able to say, all the thing I'm saying, it's a good rule, but don't tie yourself down.
Anything else before we?
Yes, I would like, this, we, this is a new.
Before we, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, oh, you're gonna go to the other finance man?
Yeah.
Were you finna go there? Okay, I, I, I have one I wanted to ask.
Go ahead.
Um, I did a little research back in two thousand, you know how we having a problem with, uh, since the city don't have money? And, uh, you know how you have company come out, like the water work come out and do, tab the streets? And it was a.
Water main grid?
Yeah, they tatted streets up, and they tell us they were in a, an agreement, this was back in, I'm gonna have to change this, because I feel like this, it makes the community. Back in two thousand and five, that was when, uh, Perkins was in office, they did have a agreement that they, that the city took on, that they will come out after the water work would tab the, the streets. They will come back and repair, but this, now it is twenty nineteen, where in our community, where you have a water work that came out and tore the street up, or, and, uh, the city doesn't come back and do what this agreement said.
See, I was the mayor, I'm having three council members on that water board, they're sure that this city, uh, not left with the bag from the works of the water.
I wanted to, I'm gonna give the council, at the time, that was some people that were on there that signed for this, and, uh, right now, this is not being carried out. Because we, that's why we got so many, well, you come put the crushroom on, and once they repaired, then it rains, and then there's these holes, they get bigger and bigger. And then you call public work, which we don't have anybody here now to do this.
I think the council needs to let the mayor know, when serves at the Superdunn Water Board, that they're, they're working, is not holding up to the agreement of that document that you showed.
Yeah, I had, I was, reason why.
I thought, I'm sorry, let me make sure I understand it, is it the water board not holding up, or the city not?
The city not holding up, because this is why, this, the people that served on there agree that the city would take on this. And, but the city ain't holding up on to the agreement this document was done.
Then we need to get on the front of that, as president, you know, you're in charge of the streets, not the mayor.
Yeah, and that's why I, this is why I came, and this is why I, I did, because I say, now wait a minute.
But the mayor's open employees.
Yeah, and we ain't have, we don't have no employees. Yes, and then I came with, with a solution.
Okay.
My solution is.
Go on then.
The water board has, I feel like if the water board come up, and I, and it's there, it's dealing with water board park. The water board has, I feel like if the water board come up, it not, and it's there, it's dealing with the water board's problems and they tear up our streets. I think that this here needs to be redone. I think they need to take over and, yeah, they need to pay it. They need to pave the street that they tore up. Right now, the city doesn't have the, the equipment, they don't have the money and they don't have manpower. But you just keep coming out here digging up in my, in, in, in our wards and I got to be buzzing my brain, running around trying to figure how I'm gonna get this done. And then when it rain, it be so bad, cars.
Who's sharing the buildings and the ground?
Me. And this is why I went and got this.
I think your committee need to have a meeting.
That's why I said.
Invite the mayor to let her know that y'all are holding y'all agreement.
Yeah, and I wanted to, see can we change this because it was done in, uh, two thousand and five.
Well, if they do it through committee.
That's what I was saying.
Bring a record.
And this is what I said.
Let the council deal with it.
That's what I said, I wanted to bring this because this would help a lot in all over the city itself. Because Alagasco, all of them, they tear our streets up. And they move on and, 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 and it's a mess. And I've been riding around and I have been puzzled. I say, I'm gonna do it with the, with Alagasco too, because they do us like that. I want to know what kind of agreement did they have with the city, with the streets.
Even, even with.
Now, that's awesome. That's a solution.
Even these contractors that put those new sewer lines in, they did a piss poor job and come back fixing up the streets.
Okay, like we have one right now, you know, on, over on First Avenue that Ray Hall. The contractor, okay, Ray Hall might have had this, 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 this job, but he had another contractor came in. So I'm having a problem right now, me and him going backwards and forth, you don't tow up First Avenue and church is bad. You keep bringing crush and run back in there and the rain calm and you telling me that the city can't fix this. This company that you brought into our community, they got to fix this and he keep trying to throw you up on the bus, but I ain't gonna give up because that got to be fixed.
Also too, that can be some of your committee where you can have some type of.
So we can say that by all these companies.
With these companies that they are, you know, hold up to the letter of the law, that they need to go ahead and complete the job completely.
Right. I think that would be fair.
That's a good idea.
That's awesome.
That's what I want, cause I'm, I'm tired of looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
One other question, weekly payroll. Why do we have weekly payroll?
I've been asking the same thing.
Who's getting paid our weekly payroll? Cause what was related to me was that.
It was council member?
Not only that, but.
Who gets weak?
I don't know, that's why I was asking.
We need to find out who gets weak.
Right, what I was, what was related to me is that we have employees that are on pay, getting bi weekly money, but maybe contracted to do something else. I don't know, we not to do that.
Say what?
Well, we got certain employees, I was told, we need to look into it, that are receiving their bi weekly pay and then receiving additional contractor money.
I, I think we need to find out, how long has been in operation?
That's why I keep asking about payroll.
Who gets bi weekly then? Have, have this been a mainstay in the city?
Uh, it's been here before we got here. So it, it wasn't something that was created on this administration. It's been three payroll policies. And I was told that, you know, having so many payrolls and having to do so many different. Uh, keeping up with, uh, sick time and annuals, so all that, so it, it becomes very cumbersome and it leads to mistakes, over payments. And you know, get an extra, you get what I'm saying?
So you recommend to me, lemonade.
I, I don't know.
But I guess, I guess we just need to find out.
But we need to determine.
What's the reason? Yeah, what's the reason how many people get bi weekly, how many?
It can't be that much, it's only ten thousand dollars.
For what?
The weekly.
Weekly.
Weekly, ten thousand dollars, so that's forty, somehow fifty thousand dollars they'll pay it out.
Council one more time.
Also too, uh, President Bowie, I want you, this is dealing with finance with the money too.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, with, I hope, I would like to know who, uh, with the, I tell the recreation department, who collects that money?
I asked the same question.
Because you know why?
It should be up on the bill.
Yeah, but I want to understand how can another outsider, it's a conflict, how can another outsider, family member be, uh, dealing with, uh?
City fund?
Yes, that's why I want to ask you. I was, I was, yes, I wanted to, can you check into that and see?
What you mean? I mean, I'm, I'm lost.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, this is like, let me have somebody at the recreation department, okay, you might have, I say like you have.
But, I mean, if they collecting money, don't they have to be bonded?
That's why I asked you.
It has to be a city employee, it gotta not a city employee.
We have someone if.
I mean, what you talking, I mean.
He was taking up.
Someone asked me and I told him, I did not know, I would ring it before.
He was taking up money for the baseball sign up?
Not.
I mean, is he, he's not a city employee?
You want?
Well, I know about that one.
Okay.
Somebody sent me a picture of him.
Get one of the city employees?
No, he's, he is a, uh.
A volunteer?
No, yeah, it's something, he's one of the people that, uh, dealing with, uh.
Coaches?
Not the coaches, he's dealing with over there at the, the recreation.
I gotta hear that. I mean, wait a minute.
The parents were paying their money to him.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You talking about a situation, you talking about a situation.
And they're not the same.
That's not the same situation.
But it's a conflict.
Oh, God.
So that's why we're asking you, we gotta be better with our finance.
You talking, okay, go back to you talking about.
Well, I'll put it like this, someone asked me, how could we allow to have, uh, like we have, he's the, I use, I'll call his name. Terry is the what, the director? He's the assistant director or what?
So he been, Terry been the molder.
The molder, can you?
I thought he was the.
What is he?
I thought he was recreational. No, he's assistant director.
He's the assistant.
And if you recall, that was a budget amendment that on.
Okay, well, he's the assistant, I use that. He's the assistant director, okay. When they have gangs and, and things out there where you paying the money and stuff, is he supposed to be the one to co- collect the money or who collects this money? How can you have, uh, the, well, I say so and so's wife or the daughter or so and so. Someone asked me that and I told them I wasn't.
Is this person high through the city or seasonal, temporary or what?
Well, they say they have been doing it in the past, but I told them I never dealt with recreation, I could, but I could ask you.
Or tell me the name, I, I.
Not by the word, I would tell you. Cause they asked, a parent asked me and they was, they were asking me, I said, listen, I'm not, I'm not on that committee, but I can, you know, bring.
I mean, just talk to me who, cause I'm.
They wanted to know how they can collect the money and do what they do.
Speaking of recreation, have we determined who is wanting to get that contract this year for the venue? Have that come before the council?
It's supposed to be up for bid. The bid is supposed to be up.
I, you know what I did? I asked for to go back for the three years. I asked him to go back.
I can, I don't have it. Go ahead.
I asked him, I did to go back for three years under the, uh, the county and the city. Uh, with the contract dealing with the, I hear with the recreation and, uh, I should, it's some, some, someone, it's something gained to me. And I wanted to read according to the way that they, uh, how they was doing it, you know, the county said that they were out of it. Uh, but from my understanding that, uh, some kind of way it's supposed to be still connected the way according to the way the contract. And I have never seen the contract and they asked me to go back three years.
You, you, are you talking about the contract for the, the sports facility? I'm, I'm, I'm actually talking about the contract for the.
The bid, the concession.
Venue where you.
Yeah.
For just potato chips and, and the drinks and.
And they said that, you know, they said that all this stuff supposed to be in.
It's, it came before us the last couple of years, cause I think we gave it, uh, we only had one bid.
I think they come through Abby's office.
That's what I said, we gotta have it, usually by February, we, we would have had.
Which would have been, yeah, February, cause the baseball season.
They've been having.
March, April, yeah.
So we need to see.
Check on that. Yeah, all right. Anything, the councilman right now, glad to have you with us, man.
Uh, I, I guess I'm, I come at the end.
Yeah, you always come at the end, brother.
Ask a question, all the matters, what, what, what have you decided to do with contract and service, you know, like?
Oh, yeah, that, that came up. I moved, I'm saying, I moved.
Cause, cause I don't, I don't understand why if the mayor said we hurting for money, we broke and all that kind of stuff and then we still, it's not money to be given.
That did come up and I think the only one that we, uh, mandated, I'm.
It's a lot there.
It's a lot there. So just make that part of the report and just move forward.
Cause that's the only one.
Cause we talked about it prior to.
And this, let me, let me.
Go ahead.
There was one more thing we never talked about, what are our goals to get our city back, our workers back? To get our city back on the, the, uh, to clean it up, cause you know why? It's finna get warm and you know, grass is, 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 is huge.
But, but, but one thing too, I'm glad you brought it up, uh, I'm gonna ask, I mean, I know you say funding, but you, you, it needs to be somewhere where you start a reentry planning with employees. Because once you get to a, a certain point in time, you consider it a being fired.
Yes.
And with that, you have to pay back time, um, you got to pay all that money back time, hours, vacation time, all that's gonna be.
Yeah, you have to.
So that's gonna be an additional cost that you want to pay with six day employees, even though it might fluctuate from time to time. But that's gonna be additional cost on top of the, uh, uh, workers comp that you're paying weekly.
It ain't gonna happen, Mr. President, unless you got new monies. I mean, I don't know why it's so hard for people to understand this. There's not gonna be no reentry unless you got a new revenue stream and that is.
And that's what we're trying to work on.
What they're, what they're stating is if there's not going to be a reentry, let the employees, make them aware. So they can start getting their, their check for their, uh, vacation time.
But, but, but keep this in mind.
They said they save not paying vacation time.
But keep this in mind also now.
Can't say that.
We gonna be mandated by, by the labor law to pay them their sick leave.
Sure, yeah, all that.
Uh, vacations, uh, you know.
Just, just, just vacation, I said.
I mean, I mean vacation, yeah, I'm thinking about.
But we have employees where, when, when a, a employee.
Well, this.
We only get laid out, but since they were laid off, that, that's a whole different ball.
But see with the laid off, they still, in the transition appear, uh, potential to come back to work.
But I'm, I'm just saying, you know, if, if, if some of those employees get a job, see they in unemployment finna run out. They see months been here.
Oh, yeah.
So once that employed, that's gonna run out, they ain't gonna have no more money.
Unless they get, unless they go back in.
Well, most of them probably trying to find jobs because of, they see the situation. I would, if I, I wouldn't wait six months.
I, 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 I'll sit around here, wait on the mayor to, let me be quiet.
Come on, man, and that's, it's time for us to go. All right, thank everybody for coming. Very productive meeting.